Got a second?
Yeah.
Um, I got a couple things. Think you could get butchered in these for me and I'll pay you?
Quit.
Oh, I'm in a hurry. Get it off. The other one is we had a garage door over there. Just a small hole in the ceiling. And I can't have that coast.
You might press it and break it. Water on it.
Did I say you all how to do that?
Don't. Just break it and get the water everywhere and then we'll have to never do it and it works.
Whatever you gotta do.
He can do it. I mean, I don't know why.
Okay.
It's not turned, but... Sounds like you falling apart up there and you got a lot of problems.
He's 20 years old. No, 19 years old. So, yeah, and I think it's like that. So, just whatever.
Okay. We're trying to get one of the apartments done to where we can rent it and then after that, he's got some little things to do. We can get him up there. I can get him up there.
Yeah. Give me a day's notice for sure.
All right. Okie doke.
How are you, sir?
If you ever want to know about it, ask me. A lot of people don't know to hear about it. Too many. They don't, you know, they ain't even listening to us because they're speaking. They ain't hearing the story.
Thanks for asking.
Anyhow, somehow or another, city's gotta get out of it. That's what I think.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I'm just trying to think of it. But if we don't, we're still in it.
Just listen.
Well, I hope there's more people that come in and listen. They might educate themselves. You know people that still work at your age? My goodness, this is my aunt.
Your Aunt Linda.
Yeah, well, she ain't gonna quit. She don't want to stay home here.
How are you, sir?
You're all right. Hear anybody go and then she'll stay at home.
How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Got your notes?
Uh, well, I got prepared to take some.
Cheat sheet.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Hopefully, we're down pretty good.
Did you have your little meeting today with Kelly?
Maybe, yeah.
About 1:30.
Did you get your...
I was just, uh...
Okay.
Me and Aaron.
My wife is so jealous of that because it says California on it.
Oh, yeah.
It was your attempt.
It was my best.
It was my only bad problem.
Good.
I bet that you golf center with him.
Yeah, I kind of thought he'd see it that way.
I'm not that good at golf.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I don't know anybody that is.
I might play part three. Hey, Paul, how you doing?
Hell, we golf once. What are you saying?
Like I said.
I admit it, though. I go for the right...
He's probably got a shot at it and he's golfing back too.
I go for the right reason. I like the...
And while I'm doing it, I'm thinking, boy, I could be doing this and I could be doing this at home or that at home, you know?
That's the way I am with hunting anymore. Deer hunting.
Hey, Joe, how you doing?
I go to hang out with my dad and my uncles.
Well, you need to. I go fishing with them. That's why I do that.
How'd you guys do?
Seven-foot waves.
Wow.
So, we didn't do nothing.
Where we at?
Lake Erie.
Oh, jeez, yeah. You gotta be careful up there.
We couldn't stand on them out. We went out because they said it was all going to be down.
Yeah, when it gets windy, because that lake is like a soup bowl.
He got over... Chewin' on that food over there.
So, we was all right as long as we was moving. Yeah, so when the wind comes, it really whips up. Then when you stop, you're...
I've got sick watching some of his boots sometimes.
I'm gonna go up there to, uh, there's a couple of rivers up there in Michigan I wanna go fish.
There's a white shrimp chewing over all his food.
Oh, yeah.
I was with him earlier. I ran into him. I don't know if I'm following him or he's following me, but there's something going on there.
Yeah, he should bring us some food.
I wanna get over there in Brookville.
I met with Kelly at 1:30 today.
Down the park?
I went down to...
You have trout fishing?
Yeah.
They're supposed to have...
I'll keep some fish down there.
Right there at the spillway. But if you follow it over there, 10 to 7.
We know it. Get away from it. You have one camera all the time.
It looks nice.
He'll keep an eye on the other side. You see, he probably turned on, make sure the camera's behind you or you're sitting there.
I should get sleepy. I just get up to take a walk.
Yep.
Why is it cooling or hot here?
He said they'd be okay.
Probably Tony.
They probably... If they keep a score, then probably beat us.
We'd win at 11:00 p.m. Yeah. At 7:00.
It's a little hot here, a little warm in here.
I couldn't do anything. That's all I could do.
Yeah, that unit's not working. I don't think so.
Then, one, about the last night, all my friends were going out and I was going to work and I thought, eh.
Yeah, I think it's been not working for three months, maybe, two months.
So, then I went to work in a shirt factory. Making a dollar and a quarter an hour. We had these big bolts of material you had to spread out on these long tables.
You know a good HVAC guy?
Talk about a sweatshop. Besides lunch, we got two 15-minute breaks. You had to take them in the men's bathroom. One urinal and one commode. It was it. There was about 30 of us. And the foreman sat in the middle of the room.
Yeah, and you gotta get long chairs.
But everyone, because you were...
Like a switch, like a switcher?
Yeah, we were close together running your material back. And if you were talking to somebody, you were walking down, he'd yell at you. So, I got a job at General Hospital at UC as an orderly. I doubled my wage. Made $3 now.
There you go.
Yeah, one of the guys there, it was awful place to work, told me one day, he said, hey, kid, he said, if you keep working like this, he said, pretty soon you'll be making what I make. And I said, well, what do you make? A dollar eighty-seven. And I thought, my God. I didn't know people paid jobs like that. They really did.
I wish I could. They said the unit's not working right now. Hot in here.
Let you keep it up, Mayor.
Maybe keep these guys from talking too much.
You got the hot air, Mayor?
And you?
I'm...
We remember you.
I'm gonna put in a motion that we get box lunches or something.
Box lunches?
Yeah.
Yeah. Who has a right idea? Comes in in shorts for crying out loud. You're early.
How's it pass like that?
You're early.
You pressed me with his attire.
Yeah, he's early.
So, where is it?
How you doing today? Yeah, it's supposed to get real hot this weekend.
Right there at that end or down?
The P's there, Mayor.
All right. Now, I have a before, an after.
Looks familiar, doesn't it? Pretty damn close.
My car, everything doesn't cost near as much as yours did.
And probably to run either, I'll tell you. Fuel mileage isn't far there.
What's happening, Mayor?
Randy thought I was gonna be late?
You told me he was gonna be late.
Where you at? Where you at? Okay.
He's sneaking up behind me.
There is any... No. You got Kelly. Look, I, uh...
I was in, I had to go see her.
Oh, really?
Yeah, my...
So, you got me and Brittany.
I was cutting the clock. I was cutting it close to my county. Yeah, this Friday.
Yeah, pizza town. Am I cross-eyed?
Yeah, yeah. Picking on you, isn't he? I don't know. She said...
I'm sorry, I don't...
Figure out what's going on here.
I heard you get...
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm...
It'll be made. Throw the mail in the hole.
It is a difference.
Yeah, normally be next week.
Thank you.
She's still in position.
Throw it down in the hole right here. Forget about it, probably. I'll probably forget about it in there.
No, I got a regular letter issue that I use. I use the same thing.
Depends on how you put it, yeah.
I guess.
Who's our attorney today?
Tom is, uh, is Del gonna be, or is, uh...
No, Doug should be on his way over here.
Apparently ran into him.
Who? Del was gonna try to. Oh, was that? Okay.
I didn't see anything about it.
We got chief and assistant chief, both.
I feel safe.
Insurance. I guess you got it.
We don't know, then?
No. How you doing? Still upright. Ready? You guys ready down there?
Get ready.
All right, we'll call the special session of city council for, what is this, August the 14th, 2017. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Randy Abner.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Seymour Jr.
Here.
Utility Director Olin Clausen.
Present.
City Attorney Dell Weldon.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Moon.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, the topic for tonight is to discuss the, uh, we have two proposed projects, uh, the same project, but two different proposals. One by, I believe I'll call it Linkmar Development, and the other is by Maxwell. And I guess what we'll entertain is a discussion...
Mayor Kelly Moon.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, the topic for tonight is to discuss the, uh, we have two proposed projects. Uh, the same project, but two different proposals. Uh, one by, I believe I'll call it Linkmire Development and the other is by Maxwell. And, uh, I guess what we'll entertain is, uh, any discussion.
Close that door.
No, no.
Close the door, please.
It, it's bringing cool air in here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's too, it's cooler out there, man.
Yeah.
Than it is in here. Can you feel cool air coming in here? Okay. Um, so anyway, I'll open it up for a discussion if anybody wants to bring up, need to know any more facts or anything else about the projects. Or I can share with you what I know about each of them.
I'd like to say something, Your Honor.
Yeah.
Uh, with one project, um, we get seventeen or seventeen and a half acres filled at, at a rate cheaper than we could otherwise. Um, and forgetting the players. And then there's another seventeen or so acres up behind Walmart that can be developed. And, and the reason I say that is there could, two reasons. It's a good deal for the city. And eventually, at some point in time, we're going to lose the biggest part of that gaming money. We have to build up our tax base if we wanna keep the services to Lawrenceburg the same as they are now. That's my opinion.
Okay. I got, I got, I'd like the history question.
Sure.
And I think from our staff over here, I mean, I've, I've always thought, and I'll say it, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've always thought back, I believe now, two administrations back, the plan was, was, was that area was gonna be developed and we did annex it, we ran utilities and we were gonna put a, a commerce or an industrial park on top of the hill. Was that our plan originally? And I'm gonna say six, seven, eight years ago.
Well, not necessarily six, seven, eight years ago. There is a commercial subdivision platted for that.
When was that determined though, back? How long ago? I think that's what you.
Ten, eleven. Around, around ten, I'm guessing.
Can I speak for a minute?
Absolutely. Put the microphone.
Boy, it's hot in here.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna get a lot hotter.
Alright guys, my name is Steve Linkmire. Last week, you guys heard from my partner Brian Bischoff. He, uh, he kinda went through the financial part of the, the project. And I just thought maybe this week I would take, take the reins a little bit and tell, give you a little history lesson. In two thousand and seven, we started developing, I'm sorry. In two thousand and seven, we started the development under the direction of the Cunningham Administration along with help from Mike Hall Land Surveying and Mike Clark from City of, City Engineer. In two thousand and nine, a company came through EDI looking for land. In partnering with the city, EDI and the state of Indiana, I built InterPact on our property. Since the property was developed, it has paid almost five hundred thousand dollars in property taxes and it employs eighty people. At the same time, I was building InterPact. I completed sixty-four apartments on the Waterview property behind Walmart that we annexed into the city of Lawrenceburg that housed two hundred people. Since two thousand and seven, Linkmire Development has moved and placed over one million yards of fill material, raising property out of the floodplain, creating usable land. We built Wilson Creek Business Park off Link's Way. We built bypassway with cooperation from the Deibern County and the Mayor Hastings of Aurora. We also built the Sycamore State Drive extension to City Specs along with water and sewer extension at our expense that will serve the whole Waterview Commerce Park. We also filled eight acres in Lawrenceburg behind Arch Two to make a shovel-ready site. The George Waters site is being, has been demoed and we're waiting on a state permit. We've got one acre there under contract to a large retailer. There are three other outlots there available for sale. With a million yards moved off of Waterview property, the seventy-seven acres is becoming a more and more desirable piece of land. Filling the seventeen point seven acres on South Tanner's Creek Drive will not only make the property buildable, but it will also make the Waterview property buildable for large commercial or industrial sites. This was always our intention. Our fill project during construction season will employ fifty to sixty people. Truck drivers, operators, laborers, engineers and geotecs. We've already moved a million plus yards of dirt without incident. And I'm ready to get back at it round the clock until it's done. Once the fill project is complete, our work will shift to developing commercial, industrial and residential properties within the city of Lawrenceburg. More jobs, more houses and more tax base. What I'm really interested in is reestablishing Linkmire Development's relationship with the city of Lawrenceburg that was damaged in the fallout of the catastrophic car administration. You guys inherited a big mess and I'd like to finish the job I started ten years ago and get things back on track with the city. With your help, the city will get back every dollar you're owed and will create millions of dollars in tax base to benefit your kids, my kids and their kids. With that said, I'd like to turn the podium over to my attorney, Bob Nice. He can better articulate our position. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that, uh, presentation by the attorney wouldn't be appropriate tonight, Steve.
You don't think so?
No, sir.
Okay, well, I don't know why. I mean, it wasn't gonna, we're not gonna talk legal issues. He was just gonna help speak for me.
That's not appropriate.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any questions for, regarding anything you just heard or, or for the other project or anything like that? I can give you some highlights of, of both projects if, if that would help, if anybody wants to hear it again.
I, I would like to hear your opinion, the pros and the cons and Kelly, I, I think the public needs to hear what we think. I'd like to back you up on it. We've talked and, and, uh.
Well, what I'll, I'll do is I'll, I'll give you the facts as I know them, uh, from both projects. Um, I don't, I don't have a vote in this or anything, but, uh, just so everybody's, um, understanding, um, the facts and not Facebook Live or whatever you wanna call it. Um, we were approached by, uh, two different groups of people to do this project. It started out being a project that was, uh, actually called Project Pac-Man if I remember right, through the state. It was, uh, supposed to be a confidential, at first it started out being a confidential lead that, uh, uh, it, cause at the beginning, when we first started talking with, uh, Mr. Maxwell, he, he wasn't sharing with us who the end user was or anything. Uh, I, we had no idea who the end user was at the time. Obviously, all that has changed. Uh, and now everybody knows who that might be or could be. Um, but the way it was presented to us, the first project, uh, and I'll call it the Maxwell project, uh, was gonna be, uh, an identical warehouse space. I think it was a half, half million square feet. Is that, am I correct in saying that? Um, and this was gonna be located, uh, and, and on a piece of property that would be, have to be, would, would be annexed by the city, uh, provided that the, uh, property owner was in agreement. And from what we know, the property owner was in agreement to do that. Um, so that wasn't gonna be the issue. Um, I think there, uh, I, I think some of the, uh, some of that project was gonna incur some utility cost. I think some utilities had to be run to that site, if I'm not mistaken, unless they're there. I don't believe they're there yet. Uh, but I don't know if that's a, a, a large cost or a large piece of the cost or not. Um, I don't believe that's been taken into consideration yet unless I'm wrong, Owen, is that?
Uh, well, specific to the, to the clump property.
Yes.
Uh, there would, there are not currently any services to the clump property.
Okay.
Those would have to be, uh, we'd have to talk about those things, plan those things and then finance or fund those, those projects.
Okay.
Those things.
And then as far as the, uh, what was gonna happen was that, that, that was gonna be built, uh, the warehouse was gonna be built on this property. Um, and, uh, projected, uh, property tax revenue is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The same as what I think you guys have projected on the, on the Linkmire project as well. Uh, the ask, uh, by the project from the city was gonna be three and a half million dollars. Um, and what, you know, that could have been done in a couple of different ways. It could have been done in, uh, we could have, uh, given them a, a check or cash towards the project. Or it could have been a, a TIF project, uh, tax increment financing project where, uh, the three hundred and fifty thousand per year in property taxes would have been collected or would have been in a, um, in a TIF fund. And over the course of ten years, that would have equated out to three and a half million dollars. Okay? And then if we wanted to, uh, we could have, uh, dropped the TIF after that and then start realizing the property tax for the entire tax base, or we could continue to keep it in TIF. Um, so the, like, like I said, the ask from them was approximately three and a half million dollars. Um, the second project, which I, I refer to as, as the Linkmire project, was then brought to us and, and, just the project alone, we're talking about just the project, nothing else that goes along with this. But, um, it was the same ordeal. It was gonna be a, a half million square foot, uh, warehouse project, uh, to be built, um, in the city limits behind the, it was landed, it'd already been annexed behind Walmart, up on the hill, up on the hill. Uh, on top of where the, uh, Waterview apartments are, I guess you're overlooking that or so to speak. Um, and that, that too was projected as a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in property taxes. Um, the, the ask, uh, from the Linkmire project was, okay, the, the, the ground that's gonna be removed from the Ellis property, which is up in, uh, behind Walmart, that ground was gonna be taken over to approximately seventeen acres, we'll just round it, seventeen acres behind, uh, the Kroger Plaza as we know it today. Uh, there's seventeen point seven acres actually back there and I think the city owns another five or six. Uh, and then a gentleman by name of Hill Senior owns, uh, like four and a half, I believe, or four acres somewhere in that relative terms. But anyway, we're just to refer, we're just talking about the seventeen acres. Uh, that ground was gonna be taken from the Ellis property and then brought to the seventeen acres. The seventeen acres was gonna be sold to the city for a dollar. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, Brian, if I, if I misspoke or anything. But it was gonna be sold to us at, at, at a rate of a dollar. What we were gonna do though, we had to pay to get the land filled, okay? Uh, the, the proposal called for, I believe it was fourteen dollars a, a cubic yard to fill it. Um, when we did our, I don't know, homework, uh, estimations at the beginning of this, we were told that to fill, to fill a piece of property like that, it's gonna cost you between sixteen to twenty dollars a cubic yard. Okay? So, um, their proposal brought it in at fourteen dollars. Well, that came out to approximately, I think, six point seven million dollars if I'm not, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, I don't think. Yes, I do. It is, six point seven million dollars. That's based on four hundred and eighty thousand cubic yards of dirt. We don't know what that number of yards is because we've gotten three different numbers since then. Okay? Um, so I think, uh, whichever project we would go through or for, if, if we were gonna fill that piece of property, uh, I think it would be best suited for the city, that we would do it based upon, um, the, the, the number of feet we're raising it. Okay? Not based upon the number of yards because we could say it's four hundred and eighty or we could say it's five hundred and eighty. Uh, you don't wanna be tied into, uh, a number. You wanna be tied into making sure it's, uh, filled into the proper height that we need it filled in to make the, to make the property worth, worth anything going forward, correct? So I think that's one piece of that, we gotta make sure that happens. Um, if you, if you do, do the numbers that, um, it, we're gonna have to come up with a, a net of about three and a half million dollars no matter which project you look at. If that's what, if that's the direction we wanna go. At the end of the day, um, our focus should be on, um, making sure that our local merchant that is, uh, driving this project gets, gets a warehouse. Cause we would rather have the warehouse, um, in Lawrenceburg, whichever way we do it, whether if you annex it or if you don't, or if you already go with what's, with property that's in Lawrenceburg. Our main concern should be helping, uh, helping our, uh, current merchant out. Um, so I think that's, that should be our focus. Um, other than that, um, you know, you, you can look at these projects any, a few different ways. Um, you can look at it, okay, we're gonna be, uh, paying X number of dollars to get this property filled, this seventeen acres if we go that route, right? Um, take a look, okay, and then you could look at, okay, um, what's that acreage gonna be worth after, after the project's done? Um, you can look at it a couple of ways. It's, it's gonna be acreage that is, uh, hopefully it's, 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 it should be shovel-ready acreage at the end. But also, um, you take a look at, um, the property tax revenue that it may generate. It's a crystal ball, right? I mean, we don't know what that, that number's gonna be yet. Um, and we can only hope that, that somebody will wanna purchase the land and, and put something on there that will, uh, bring some jobs in and property tax. Um, I think Mel hit, hit a good point, you know, we, we certainly need to look at anything we do here in the city as a, um, we gotta start weaning ourselves off of the, the riverboat money or being so dependent on that. And that's not only go for the city, but it goes for, uh, people that, that are benefiting from this riverboat money because it's not always gonna be there, right? Uh, we're, eventually, um, we're gonna have to depend on property tax, uh, revenue. Um, and I think that that's, this administration so far has done a pretty good job of, of doing that. Um, and the projects that we're investing in have developed into, are gonna develop into, uh, additional property tax revenue. Um, as far, that, that's, that's really the facts to the projects. Um, you know, there's, uh, you can, you could probably, uh, you know, if I asked Mr. Linkmire and Mr. Bischoff to get up and talk about their project, they, they're gonna talk emphatically about the benefits of their project, okay? I don't know if anyone here is, or anybody's here from, from Maxwell's, uh, project or not, but I would assume they would do the. but I would assume they would do the same thing. But ultimately, it's in the decision of these five individuals up here, and what they feel is best for the city of Lawrenceburg. And that's, that's what I would caution them, and, and they need to be looking out for, is what, what's best for the city of Lawrenceburg. With that, I mean, I, I think, you know, this isn't a decision that any of us should be taking lightly, and I think, you know, now's the time to get the discussion out, because after the meeting, or after a vote, or anything like that, it's, you know, that's not the time to start talking about it. Yes, sir?
I'd like to address counsel.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
My name's already been mentioned here. My name's Craig Hilsinger. I developed the Kroger and Lowe's and everything else at that intersection.
Okay.
Obviously, because of your observation, you know what I'm, probably the reason I'm here, I'm concerned about this valley that's going to be created between the 17 acres and our property.
Okay.
Impounding that water on, impounding water on our site is something we can't allow. I haven't seen a plan, I don't know if there's a drainage system set up for that currently, there's nothing down there. So there's going to have to be something approximately 25 feet below the surface that you're going to have, that's going to have to carry our runoff to some, someplace. A couple of things that, that just struck me on this, I just found out about this Friday, and I, I saw the article, but I don't know if those numbers are right, and frankly, I'm not concerned about the finances. All you got, all of you are making good points. You know, it's good to do something. We build a lot of tax base in the, in the city too, and it, and it's not easy to do. So I know what your task is. But this 17 acres, everybody keeps talking about this 17 acres. If you have a three to one slope when you put this fill in, you're losing six acres. You've got 11 acres, is what you're going to have when that's done. And that's about the size of that warehouse, to put it in perspective, that you guys are talking about. That's about an 11 acre building. And so, you know, there's, that's what you have to look at. But these are, these are my concerns, that, you know, we don't want that water impounded on us. And, and, you know, I, somebody, no one's has mentioned this yet, I don't know if anybody's brought it up, but by the time you slope that, you've got to have like a trapezoid, like a pyramid with a top cut off, just pad back there, that's going to be approximately 500 by, where's my number, about 875 feet pad. It'll be there. And, and between the, I think, I think I and M, or whatever the entity is, owns, owns some of the property behind Lowe's, and their water's going to be impounded on them too, and I'm sure they're going to be, they'd like to know about that. And I don't know where it's going to go, back, back there, I mean, that's as flat, as flat as a pancake. It's already, there's already cattails on some of that, and some issues that come up with that. I know Mike Clark is, he and I have discussed that over the last 18 or so years. So I have some other points that go, get into the finances of it, but I mean, you're not going to make it work out. It would make no sense to a businessman to do what you're talking about, but, you know, looking out 50 or 100 years is what you're looking at. It makes, it may make some sense. But my concern is that they're going to leave this hole behind us, it's going to have, it's going to be a pond.
What acreage is that, Mr. Hilsinger? Is that about four acres there, you said?
Yes, 4.1, I think.
I, I didn't know if I had that correct or not, but...
That's about right, 4.2.
Okay.
Where's that located at, if I can ask?
It's directly behind the Kroger center and our shop space there. Goes, oh, I don't know what the depth of it is, I guess it's 300 or 400 feet deep.
So right behind that, and then there's a mound there, and it's kind of fenced in, and then you go back to Linkmeyer, so there's...
Oh yeah, there's, since you pass Kroger on the right, there's four acres there.
Okay.
Right south of that, towards the river, there's 17 acres.
Okay.
If you go towards Aurora, then you do have a pond there. Been there for years.
Correct. There's some acreage that belongs to Lowe's at the bottom there, where they currently have their detention. And then there's a finger of that, of I and M property, I guess is who owns it, that comes in there also, that lines up with the back of our property. At one time, we had made a proposal to the city, Mike could tell you about it, to fill the entire area, the 17 acres. I and M said that they would probably trade us that property, or sell us that property, or let us fill it. And then Lowe's also agreed to that, and we were going to fill the entire thing, and it was going to give us about 26, 27 acres back there. That was in 2013. But that didn't go anywhere. At that time, we were looking at 800, this is engineers' numbers, we were looking at 800,000 cubic yards, and that would have filled the entire thing. Of course, at that time, we were going to get the whole thing done for 5.7 million, and include the engineering, paving, and everything. But those days are over.
And Mr. Hilsinger, could you introduce yourself, just for those in the audience who might not know who you are?
My name's Craig Hilsinger. I own a company, an entity, one of our entities owns the shopping center, another of our entities owns the four acres. And we built the, we moved all the dirt, we moved 2 million yards of dirt across Route 50. We built the pad for the, for the power plant, the gas power plant, and for, we used 1.3 million for our property, and I include Lowe's and the post office, and McDonald's, and, and then, then later on, a couple of years later, we moved 700,000 for the, for the power plant. But that was a totally different thing, I mean, we had off-road trucks going across. Mel Davis watched half of them go across the road, I think.
I have a question, Mr. Hilsinger. That 4.1 acres, or whatever it is, would you have to fill that in order to develop it?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, you can't, you can't do anything down there, except maybe play soccer on those fields back there. And that would only be a certain time of the year. But yeah, the, the idea of filling that site is, is, has been a good idea for a long time. And, you know, since they're closing the power plant, or closed the power plant, I don't know how, at one time, the guys at I and M told me they were going to use that for ash pits back in there. Now, I don't know if that's still true or not. I haven't talked to anyone there for years. But I think, I think if somebody, if you really want to do this, and I, and if you came to me and you said, what do you think we ought to do? I think somebody ought to spend some time and contact everybody, and if you're, if you're looking for economic development, you're looking for the best bang for your buck. And you want to get, have the, the biggest, best thing that you can have, you need to look at that whole area, and see what can be done with it. If you fill part of it, you fill a little corner of it, and you've got a hole on either, the hole on three sides of it, you end up with a 10 acres usable. It's really not going to be a desirable spot. I mean, at some point, you know, we may want to expand that Kroger store, maybe Krogers decides to put a delivery warehouse, the way things are going, or a drone landing area, for, you know, whatever, wherever we're going with all of that. But I think, I think that really should be taking a whole, I, I think a real good conversation with I and M would be a, with somebody.
Well, Mr. Hilsinger, don't you think we have to start someplace?
Oh yeah.
With the 17 acres?
You know, you don't want to put something in your way that's going to screw up the, the rest of the development.
Well, maybe we can have a chat afterwards, but we have to get that 17 acres first.
Okay. Well, like I said, I'd like to see a plan of what, you know, what they're going to do with the drainage, you know, before they start. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you.
Can we comment on the drainage? Kendall Bales with Reso Engineering. I've been working with Linkmeyer on a lot of the conceptual developments and plans that we've done to date. I think we presented you guys with some of the volumes from the last, that was discussed in your last work session. Anything that we do drainage-wise has to be done per local and federal requirements, so we can't cause damage on somebody else's property. So the drainage will be addressed, and it won't be allowed to cause damage on somebody else's property. Also from, I believe the toe of the slope at, the drive there to the back of this 17 acres, there's about four feet of drop anyway. So what can be done to fix the drainage will be done, so it won't be allowed to damage somebody else's property. I'm sure that if somebody else wanted to talk to the Linkmeyers about moving some dirt and filling that property too, maybe there is a global solution, so maybe more people should get involved in this, and play with some economies of scale, so. I just want to make that comment on the drainage, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments up here? Yes, sir?
I'm Mike Severs. Tony, Tony Graver and I have property back there too, that we've already got filled. We've got about five acres. And we're concerned the same way as Craig is about the drainage. But is your goal, my question for you, is your goal, then this is trying to get the $3 million that you loaned, loaned to Linkmeyer's back, right?
Well, our goal is to help our merchant get a warehouse.
Right. But to get the $3 million, you don't want the $3 million back?
I didn't say that.
Oh. Have any of you seen the original purchase agreement on that property?
On which property?
On the 17 acres.
I'm sure we've run across that before.
I got it. And what it states was, when this deal first come together, because I'd bid on four acres down there when it first come to start, city of Lawrenceburg was to receive $1 million upon the start of filling that property, 17 acre. And another million, the city was going to give Linkmeyer $1 million when they started it, another million when they got it annexed, another million when they got it done.
What's the date on that contract? Could you tell me that?
November 2009.
Oh, that's way before us.
Yeah, right. But what you have right now, you've got 17 acres that you've got $200,000 an acre in. The city, city, what they did was paid Linkmeyer to take that grant, $200,000 an acre. Now you're talking about putting another 6.7 million in it, which is $400,000. You got $600,000 in it.
Wait, listen, Mr. Severs, I know where you're going with this, and, and you, obviously, you don't know a lot about me either. I, I like to think that I, I've done my due diligence on numbers, because that's what I do. And I, I know what you're saying, you're exactly right. On, on the surface, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
Numbers-wise. But, but here's, here's the, the only thing that I was trying to, that we've been trying to do is, we're, right now, we don't have any land to offer anybody. You know what I'm saying? That's, so I, this was just an opportunity that came across, no different than the other proposal. You know, so that, you know, and what happened in, you know, listen, in 2009, or whatever, we can't certainly speak for up here.
I understand that.
You know, I, I just...
Yeah, I'm not saying that this was done before you guys come along.
Sure.
But you still got that much money in it today. And if you're going to put it, I'd, I'd sell you our property for that, for that same kind of money, if that's what you're looking, if you want more property.
Well, Mr. Severs, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we, we aren't here to buy property right now. We're here to find a starting point for a project, and perhaps get some developable land for the city.
But I'm studying, you know, and as far as moving the dirt, I think the $14,000, or the $14 a yard, when you do that project, is high, and you ought to work out some way to have it publicly bid to move that dirt. I think you'll be surprised at what, what kind of prices you'll come up with. I've had some, heard of a project the other day that was going to fill in the old fences for $8 a yard. Guy said he was going to do it for.
I, I don't doubt what, what you're saying.
I would think it'd be, help the city quite a bit to put it out publicly. Bid the dirt work out publicly. That's my opinion, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm James Howard. How y'all doing? Thanks for hearing me. As they looked at it, as you said, this was confidential in the beginning, so we're just not hearing about it. There is other property around town. We got 130 acres up on the hill there. It's right on the line of, of scenic. I don't know if Proximo or Mr. Montgomery knows about any of the other land that would be up there, it would be available, but we're, it's up for like 650,000 for 130 acres. I don't know if that would be appealing to anybody else that would know about that. Wouldn't be a whole lot of dirt swapping and all other stuff, you just build, build a place.
And I'm not, you know, I, I didn't know about it until you called me the other day, Jamie, about that 130 acres. But all I can tell you is, this, this project that we're talking about was initiated by a, a state bid. So we didn't, we didn't initiate this or anything, we don't, that, that came from, from the state, so that's where it initiated. So I, I can't, you know, I don't know how that would have came in.
And I appreciate it, I just want to let, know that there is other property that are available, if people are interested.
Thank you. Thanks, Jamie. Yes, sir?
I did happen to run this by Dave O'Meara, the bid on that price, because I couldn't make these numbers work, I didn't know anything about the $14, I couldn't figure out where it came from. They're guessing around 850. I expect that from Scott Dawson.
Yeah. I'm hearing some of these numbers, I, I wish we'd seen some of this in writing. That'd be nice. But, but listen, any other questions?
I got one question without getting, getting any lawsuits or anything. Are there any liens on any of the Linkmeyer properties?
I believe the only lien on the property is what the city has on it.
You believe?
There's a bank loan on a part of another piece of property, that the city doesn't come with a, correct? Yeah.
Okay.
That's up on the top side of the property. We have those based in our number department.
Who else? Well, I'll, I'll entertain a motion on one of these projects, or you've heard other information tonight, so I'm open to listening.
Your honor?
Yes, sir?
I'd like to make a motion that we pursue the billing of the 17 and a half acres, whatever it is, that project there.
Before you, before you make that motion, your honor, is it legal for us to just say we're going to pay them to fill it? Do we don't have to put it out for bids, or anything like that?
I, I don't know how we can put something out for bid that we don't own. We don't own either piece of property. That's, that's what I'm sitting here trying to think, Tony, I don't know.
I would think that we would have to bid it out, but I'd like to find out for sure.
One, one other thing, also Paul, that we talked about the end user of this warehouse, you don't even know what his cost was going to be, remember which one was better for them? The cost they were going to charge him, either of these two proposals?
Well, from what I understand, I mean, we should be looking at this project tonight as a development project with, with whoever approaches after these projects are completed. We, we don't have any commitment from anybody, do we?
Isn't the city in the process of foreclosing on the properties?
What's that?
Isn't the city in the process of foreclosing on the properties?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Isn't the city in the process of foreclosing on those properties?
We're not speaking to the litigation.
That'd make it yours.
Excuse me?
That would make it your property, so you could put it out for public bid.
No, it doesn't make it ours till the court rules.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's stay on the lawsuits.
As of right now, Steve Linkmeyer again, as of right now, there'll be no dirt put on the 17 acres unless it comes from the property that we own behind Walmart. That's just how it is.
You own it?
We own it. We own both pieces of property. I'm here to ask for some assistance to fill the 17 acres, to bring a nice facility to the inside city limits of Lawrenceburg. I think the piece of property everybody else is talking about, they're all in the county, there's not enough utilities there. I'm looking to fill the 17 acres, create land that is usable behind Walmart in the Waterview Commerce Park, and also you guys will end up with a piece of, with 17 acres down on Tanner's Creek Drive South, and it will be shovel-ready when I leave that site. Thank you.
Now, a few more questions, Steve. We're talking about one lot on top of the Ellis property. How many more lots will that give you an opportunity to create? And was there six?
Actually, there's, I believe there's seven footprints there on that property that can go about between 25 and 35 acres. We're gonna have to do some retention, so some of that'll take care of, some of that will be used up as retention ponds.
And that's also part of the ability of paying off our debt?
Absolutely. And every time I sell a piece of property, you guys will end up getting $25,000 an acre, anything I sell. So, if, you know, if we get a 25, what is it, a 25 acre side up there, the city's gonna get another $750,000 back. I think that's the right number. You know, right away. Not only will you end up with 17 acres, but you're gonna end up with, you're gonna end up getting repaid, every nickel that I have borrowed. I've never had an intention, any intention, of screwing the city out of any money. Like I said in my opening statement there, it wasn't you, this is not your problem, it never was your problem. The problem is, I got caught up in an election, and it was a bad one. And the politics took over. And I'm just here to try to get back on course. Hopefully, the city of Lawrenceburg can prosper from what I have done. And be honest with you, I believe they already have.
I'd like to clarify, ask a couple of questions. Mr. Hillsinger, you said it was $8.50 a yard to be moved?
You go to the city.
Is that the price that you got? Didn't you say it was $8.50?
Yes, sir. I asked him to get back to me yesterday, before, or today before 4 o'clock, and he didn't, but he just did.
Okay, well, my next question is...
And that's a guess. I mean, you know, maybe it's $9.50.
Okay, so, how much is the Linkmeyer Development wanting to charge this yard?
Does that include the dirt?
I'm sorry, Tony, what is it?
How much does the Linkmeyer Development want to charge?
No, he's not buying the dirt, that's just hauling. He has to buy the dirt.
Oh, that's just hauling?
No, that's hauling that dirt, yeah.
All right, how about hauling, compaction?
I didn't get to answer my question. How much was it for Linkmeyer's?
$10.
$14, okay.
That's for dirt and hauling, yes. And...
Compaction.
Thank you.
And you said it was $8.50 for the hauling, is what approximately?
No, that's not the hauling, that's hauling and placing.
Okay.
That's hauling and placing. I mean, that's not gonna be drainage, drainage, I doubt that it has geotech engineering in it.
Sure.
I'll tell you, just, you were looking for something in writing. Here's a proposal I gave the city in 2013. You can have this.
Oh, okay.
It outlines all the itemized lists of what we're gonna do. And what we're gonna provide. Says a lot.
Good. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I come back up again?
Steve Linkmeyer. You know, that $8.50 a yard is, I don't know how they're planning on getting it across the road. Maybe they're gonna, they're gonna try to get it across the road with off-road trucks. I have to run my stuff with triaxle dump trucks. I didn't have the opportunity to use off-road trucks like Craig Hillsinger did back in the, in 2000, I believe, something like that?
99, Tuesday.
99 or 2000.
98, Tuesday.
Yeah, you know, I never, the majority of the cost of this is gonna be running dump trucks across the road. Placing it is not, it is a big deal, but placing it is not where the cost is. The cost is in transportation. And not only that, my dirt's not free. I'm gonna charge for my dirt. If you guys want to put it out for bid, I'm gonna ask $10 a yard for my dirt to fill my property. So, there you have it.
Your Honor, have a motion on the floor? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we got all the questions first.
Well, didn't our lawyer want to know whether it's gonna be legal for us to do it that way first?
Well, I just don't, I don't know the answer. I mean, I'd like to know, I think it's important to know.
I think there's a lot of things that we need to get the answers to, but we could go through with the motion, but pending, it had to be pending, you know, opinions and things like that.
I think so.
Any other questions up here, guys? You guys, anything else down there?
No, I'm not gonna vote anything until Beau looks at all of it all together, so it's just me.
Anything down here, you guys?
I'm just kinda bummed out. Here we are again, sitting here tonight, decision time. Been here a year and a half, knew it was coming. I own the property. I don't see how in the world this could possibly be a hit job. This is just, this is ridiculous in my book. This is a yes or no vote. We are either a part of going ahead with a redevelopment, possibly type project, or we're not interested. I mean, I just, I don't understand how we can even think that we could have a bid on property that isn't even ours. So, what...
The only thing I can see, Paul, is through using our money to move that with, and it's taxpayers' money to pay for the movement of that dirt.
We gave 860 grand to a guy at the shopping center, and we didn't ask for no bids on that.
Man, ain't got nothing to do with this.
I can see how they're there.
Anyway, you know, I just...
What we found and see here too, I mean, we have two different bids here. Everybody wants to talk about the Linkmeyers. But all we really want is a warehouse. I don't care about the 17 acres property right now, because there's a lot of trouble with it. We need a warehouse for Proximo. And we have a bid here that's not gonna cost the city near as much money, tax and sin financing.
Well, if you want to...
That's less money coming out of our bank account than we're drawing interest on.
Well, if you want to talk about that one, I'll say my piece on that one. I don't know that I want 300 trucks a day pulling out on the worst hill in Lawrenceburg. I don't know that I want...
There's gonna be roadwork done on that project, too.
There needs to be, that's a shame, because it's the newest road in Deveron County and the worst road.
But there needs roadwork on both jobs.
But here's my other problem with it. I don't want to ruin, possibly, the nicest subdivision the city of Lawrenceburg has. Those people up there have built some fine homes. That property, I think, we're always talking in here, where can we get some nice homes at in Lawrenceburg? I'm not, I'm not against a plan on that piece of property, but I just ain't so sure that I want to start running semis up and down, up and down the hill, Tony, and that's, you know, that's my issue with it. I'm not ready to take and tell those 20 or 30 homeowners up there, we don't care what you think, we're gonna put a 500,000 square foot warehouse, so that you can't see your view no more. How do you feel about that?
I don't think we're saying...
I've had a lot of phone calls from, that happens to be in the 3rd district, 3rd council district, and I've had a lot of phone calls about that situation. I don't think you're gonna find one voter taxpayer up there that is in favor of that warehouse and the trucking that's gonna go back and forth to build and operate the warehouse.
I mean, if you want to take a vote on that piece of property, I'd sure be willing to vote on it, if you want it.
Brad Massey, I live at 311 Overlook, and the property that Paul's talking about is mine. It is probably from me to the wall away from me. I don't want to see it. I don't know, Mr. Clump didn't know if he was in his room tonight, but I don't want an explanation. Like they said, I'm in District 3, I'm a vote, I'm a taxpayer, I've been living there for 13 years, peace and quiet, I don't want to hear it. Me and Mr. Todd talked, he moved out to Dillsboro because he was tired of hearing the trains run all night long. He's in the country. I bought Overlook Drive to Overlook. I want to overlook a warehouse. Thank you.
Well, I agree in District 2. Yeah. But that's the, that's the, that's the one street that's in District 2.
Aaron knows that. Okay, um...
And I agree, I've heard a lot about that, that property as well. I mean, I know there's petition, I said I'd be here tonight, but I wouldn't vote on that either as well tonight, because I want to see the petition and what percentage of it against it up there as well.
I think, I said this at the last meeting, we owe, we owe our merchant an answer. Not so much do we owe Mr. Linkmeyer or Mr. Maxwell an answer, well, I think we owe our merchant an answer. And that's what we had committed to doing last meeting. That was the whole gist of having tonight's meeting, was to get discussion, get the facts out. Does that mean that everything's gonna be settled tonight? I don't think so, because there's a lot of things that have to be looked into. But I think there's gotta be some kind of direction going forward. And that's what I was expecting to come out of tonight. Is there, Aaron, you made the comment, you didn't want to vote tonight?
No, I'm gonna vote no on either one tonight because of the legal issues with the hauling dirt, and then I want to talk to the homeowners and see the petition I heard about yesterday of all the homeowners that there's, I'm gonna vote no to either one. That's just me, though.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. And now I want you to rephrase your motion, because I want it phrased the best you can for tonight, anyway. Okay, I make a motion that we pursue the 17 and a half acres to fill and eventually own after it's filled, based on legal opinion about the legality of going out for bids or not, for the hauling and placing. Okay. About the best I can do. All right. If you want to add to it, you can. You're suggesting to go forward with the Linkmeyer project? Yes. Okay, on the 17.7 acres? Yes. All right. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. Do I get a second?
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
The only question I have now is, is we're moving forward, can you word it somehow to where we're also not only looking into the legality, but we haven't come up with the cost yet? Is that, is that needed?
Well, I think a lot of the details haven't gotten, been gotten yet.
So, okay.
But I think this is just for direction.
Okay.
Am I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I don't, if that's your, because I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I agree. But we gotta get off dead center.
So, we're starting a negotiation, basically.
If... We have to get off dead center.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tony Abbott.
Nay.
Councilmember Aaron Cook.
No.
Councilmember Mel Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Randy Abner.
Nay.
Councilmember Paul Seymour Jr.
Yes.
Motion fails for 3-2, or 2-3. Is there a motion on the other piece of property? Only two we got, so. All right, that's it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
What about have someone looking into the 130 acres on the hill that was mentioned tonight?
Well, that's up to, that's up to Proximo, that's not us.
Okay.
That's nothing, I mean, I'll certainly tell them about it.
Okay.
So... I move to adjourn. Okay, second?
Selecting everything, anything else to talk about, I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, Greg, how are you, sir? How's the sun doing?
Very green, baby.
Yeah, matter of fact, he's, he went out to Sonoma, California last week.
Turn on these Drag Race channels, I never see the guy.
It's on Fox, on this public screen.
It was covered by...
I gotta stay here.
ABC and they...
Hey, I need to...
Weird hours, everything else.
It's late for that, you win.
It's usually late, but the good thing I'm usually there in person, so I'm making a lot of these on the...
You too, you're looking young, you must be doing something, right?
How you doing, sir? I see y'all doing the walk.
Yes.
Time to work this down, y'all.